And call this meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors to order for Tuesday, January 11th, 2011. We begin this morning with a flag salute led by Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It's our great pleasure today to welcome a new member to the Placer County Board of Supervisors, Mr. Jack Duran, having been elected to represent the first Supervisory District. And so at this time, ask our friend, Placer County's Clerk, Recorder, Registrar of Voters, Mr. Jim McCauley, if he would please step forward. Mr. Duran, if you would, please step down, and Mr. McCauley will administer the oath of office to you.
That's not the other guy.
Oh, yeah, Robert. Yeah, get down to Robert. Yeah, we're stuck with Wygant. You know, this is ceremony for Jack. For you, it's like going out for breakfast.
Okay. Raise your right hand, and I repeat your name.
I do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The next order of business, and given my performance so far this morning, it can't come too soon, is to select a new chairman of the Board of Supervisors. So at this time, I would accept nominations for the Chairman of the Board for 2011. I see a light down here. Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, I'd like to nominate the Dean of our board. Supervisor Robert Wygant as our chair.
Okay, we have a motion by Holmes, second by Montgomery, to nominate Robert Wygant to be Chairman of the Board of Supervisors for 2011. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Supervisor Wygant, the gavel's yours.
Thinking about against yourself? And I didn't open the water, it's still fresh.
Chair's too tall for me, Kirk. Well, next, select a vice chair. So nominations are open for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would nominate Supervisor Montgomery for vice chair.
It's been moved in second that Supervisor Montgomery be vice chair. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And Kirk, though, if you would come up here, please.
It is my pleasure to give you this plaque.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
For your year as chair. You ran great meetings, we had a great year, your meetings were very efficient. I even enjoyed your sense of humor, so I hope you reciprocate this year. Good mean?
No, the courtesy laugh is always easy and coming.
Congratulations. It's been a real pleasure serving with you. Did a great job, as sure you always do.
Thank you very much.
And next, Anne, if you will read our meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, January 11th, 2011. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The Board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the Board. Keep in mind, the Chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pages and cell phones be either turned off or put in silent mode. Thank you for your participation and co-operation.
Thanks, Anne. Next is a time for public comment. This is a time, as Anne mentioned, when people can address the Board on something that is not on the agenda, keeping in mind that we can take no action. So please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Bartley Backus, and my complaint is the premeditated planned criminal assaults and battery of my family and myself. These assaults are accomplished by using the cellphone, wireless internet tower, microwave towers, and radio and microwave systems installed in county buildings. These premeditated planned assaults on me have caused several permanent injuries. I have complained verbally and in writing of these assaults to 15 county, state, and federal agencies, three phone companies, and now you, the Board of Supervisors. I have given proof of these assaults to Roger Davis, Negatives, which act as a film badge. I gave copies of letters and subpoenas to the court, Sheriff's Internal Affairs, FBI, and my supervisor, Jennifer Montgomery. I went to the VA clinic after every assault in probation in the sheriff's building, in the jail, in the court buildings, and in the new DA's building. I proved that these assaults were affecting my blood tests at the clinic. My eye surgeon told me last June that these assaults are deadly. I planned, the planned installation and use of these radio and microwave systems, computer programs, and electronic control panels in the jail and other county buildings is illegal. I have watched employees operate them and start and stop assaults on me. These assaults are continuing day and night, wherever I go. The people involved in the approval and use of these systems are more than domestic enemies of the Constitution of the United States. They are committing treason and should be permanently removed from working in law enforcement, the courts, and public employment. Dr. Robert Becker, M.D., calls these systems weapons of invisible warfare. I am asking the Board of Supervisors to have all these systems removed from the county and request the Attorney General investigate and prosecute these people. The Constitution of California states his job is to supervise all sheriffs and DAs throughout the state. He told me it's not his job, or his staff. The subpoena I had served on the phone company will prove what I have said is true. Jennifer Montgomery has a copy of it with my history of acquired knowledge about the dangers of these systems. Here is a copy of Dr. Becker's book, copyright 1985. You should read Chapter 15. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Book, pictures, and phone numbers. Thank you for your comments. Kirk, your light's not. Next, please.
Good morning. My name is Paul Kamisky. I live in Newcastle. I am here today to urge the Board to revisit a decision you made last month, which involved the reduction of dental care to indigent people in this county. What you did was approve a plan that drops preventive care for indigent people, and instead of giving them permanent fillings, will use temporary fillings, which ultimately will result in the loss of their teeth. You could imagine if Mr. Grimm came in here and told you that, as one gentleman told you last month, that you're going to, that he's going to start filling potholes with gravel, that you would say, geez, this is a loser. Well, we're doing that with people's dental health, which ultimately will affect their health. And this is a time when we need to be smarter with our money. There are ways we, I'd ask you to send this back to the staff and tell them to figure out some different way to serve these indigent people. They had 450 people who visited the dental clinic last year. That's not a huge number. It could be possible, for example, that in this county, that there could be a voucher system where some private dentists may take up some of the slack if they knew they wouldn't be overwhelmed by patients. There have to be other ways to provide dental care for people. We judge ourselves as a democracy and as a people by the way we treat the most vulnerable among us. And when we save, trying to save money, we shouldn't hit the people who are on the bottom. And I think in a county like this, with the kind of wealth that we have here, with a long history of pioneering people who figure out inventive solutions to problems, that we could do better than this. I brought some other people here to ask them to stand or at least raise their hand who've come here this morning on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board during public comment? Hearing none, please come forward and state your name.
Good morning. My name is Herb Whitaker, and I'm a resident of Auburn and of Placer County, and I appear before you today as a resident, not as a representative of legal services, as I normally do. Thank you for this opportunity to speak very quickly. I would merely like to second what Mr. Kamisky just said about the dental health service cuts. I've already made my presentation to the Board on this matter, so I'll not elaborate on that. But I'll simply say that I support his views. I would like to say that I would ask the Board to focus on the fact that these are the poorest and the most vulnerable citizens that we have in our county. These are also individuals who are in pain because of their dental health issues. And so this is something that I don't think that the county can just ignore or turn its back on. I realize that these are very difficult financial times and that they're unsettled times with the state budget and that sort of thing. So I would just like to ask the Board of Supervisors to continue to look at this issue and be willing to review this issue again in the future, especially as financial matters settle with the state, and see if we can revisit this issue and try to restore the cuts that were made to the dental health program. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board under public comment? Hearing none, we will close public comment and go to Supervisor Committee reports. May Supervisor Committee reports? I have one. Jennifer, would you please come up to the podium, please? I have a commendation. A little bit of background, the Lighthouse is a nonprofit organization in Lincoln that provides social services that are desperately needed there, and in partnership with Placer County and the school district. It started as an idea from Joe Ferrera, my predecessor's brother, in this business, who had a career in education and linked the Western Placer Unified School District with interns and resources at Sacramento State to provide increased family counseling services to the school district. About five or six years ago, that effort transitioned into a nonprofit. In the beginning, I was on their advisory council, but when it transitioned into a nonprofit, Jennifer had gone to those meetings and represented me, and they didn't ask me to be on their Board, they asked Jennifer to be on the Board because they had learned that she was effective and I wasn't very effective. And in the last two years, Jennifer served as Chair, and during those two years, the organization has hugely improved and flourished. And with that, then, I'm going to give you a commendation, Jennifer. So you'll bear with me. Whereas the Lighthouse Counseling and Family Resource Center, commonly called the Lighthouse, is located in Lincoln. It's a nonprofit organization, whereas their vision is to ensure that every resident of Lincoln, Sheridan, has the opportunity to live a safe, healthy, and productive life with a goal to provide readily accessible services at no cost to children, youth, and families who need physical, emotional, and/or mental health resources to improve their quality of life. Whereas in 1996, their founder, Joe Ferrera, and partner Cotton Johnson, in conjunction with a team of educators who shared their vision, seized an opportunity to use their education and resources to enhance the academic performance of students throughout the Western Placer Unified School District. They launched a new program called School-Based Counseling Services to provide services in a more holistic manner to children in the community of Lincoln and Sheridan by utilizing California State University grad students studying psychology, social work, and counseling, and funding through federal grants. Whereas in 2005, the Western Placer Unified School District, City of Lincoln, Placer County, and community partners joined together to recognize the Lighthouse, to reorganize the Lighthouse into a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, naming it the Lighthouse Counseling and Family Resource Center. They then provided expanded funding opportunities so they could maintain and build services to meet the growing needs of the citizens of Lincoln and Sheridan. Whereas Jennifer was instrumental in the development of the Lighthouse Counseling and Resource Center. She truly caught the vision and ran with it to the benefit of many. Whereas she has strengthened the relationship between the Lighthouse, community leaders, including Health and Human Services Division of Placer County, through her energetic passion to develop a professional Board of Directors that collaboratively pursues all available resources for services to the Lighthouse. Whereas she has served two consecutive years as elected Chair of the Board, 2009 and 10. As Chair, she significantly improved the professional flow of communication between staff and the Board of Directors. She committed herself from the beginning to evaluate the existing structure, to determine where growth opportunity existed, and to apply new approaches where they were needed. Whereas her tenacious spirit brought to the Board a level of sophistication that raised the bar on education, fundraising, team building, and attention to detail. Leading from example, she challenged everyone on the Board particularly to do more, anticipate favorable results, and commissioned staff and the Board of Directors to create and develop a succession plan that would carry forward uninterrupted quality of services throughout recruitment, talented, educated, well-trained leadership. As Chair, she developed the Board of Directors to function actively towards securing financial support, participating in fundraising activities, developed effective committees for the Board. Whereas prior to becoming Chair in 2007, and Jennifer completely coordinated the Celebrity Waiter Annual Fundraising Event that has proven to be one of the most successful fundraisers held by the organization and has resulted in the ability to increase services. Whereas Jennifer and the Executive Director Angela Panavas, who is in the audience, successfully secured a Sutter Health Grant where they beat the competition to win a $50,000 grant after appearing before a panel to explain the benefits. Whereas the Sutter Health Grant allowed the Lighthouse to develop their marketing abilities to obtain a new loco, new website, new marketing materials, strategic fund development plan. Whereas Jennifer always takes a can-do attitude, and I'll just, I could go on forever, but I can emphasize and thank you enough for the work that you've done and what you've completed. I wanted to point out that as leaving Chair in the succession plan, Jennifer is followed by Freddick Currie, who is the Chief Operating Officer of Sure West, who will then be followed by Primo Santini, both new members to the Board of the Lighthouse, obviously developing and enhancing and positioning this organization to hugely improve its services on and to the future to the benefit of the Lincoln community. So thank you, Jennifer. Anne, I think I pulled off a surprise, but I'm not sure. Thank you. Yeah, you go.
Thank you, Chairman Wygant, and members of the Board. I, this is certainly a surprise to me, and I'm very appreciative as a staffer to Supervisor Wygant. I literally know every agenda item on the agenda. So you did a good job getting this one by me, and I'm so grateful to you and your gracious comments. I just want to comment that you said a lot here, and I'm, again, so appreciative and caught off guard by this. I've had such an incredibly rich journey working with the Lighthouse. It's allowed me to work with amazingly talented and giving people, and most importantly, and what is most fulfilling, is that I've been able to help those in our community that are really struggling. And that is the biggest gift to me of all, is that I'm in a position to help and give back. And none of this work could be done at the Lighthouse if it wasn't for our amazing team. It is a team effort, and I did see Angela Panavas in the audience, and I'd like to recognize her. Angela is our Executive Director of the Lighthouse. Angela, if you can please stand. She's done an amazing job, and I have to say, we have an amazing, amazing staff, and I'm convinced probably the best in the industry. So if it wasn't for our donors, our volunteers, Supervisor Wygant, you're one of our favorite volunteers and one of the most dedicated, and we thank you so much, our work here wouldn't be possible. And we will continue to work hard and make Lincoln, Sheridan, and Placer County proud. Thank you so much.
So our first timed item is 9:30. We will start with our department items. Oh, I'm sorry. See, new chairs, just forget everything. Our first item actually is the Consent Agenda. Does anyone wish to discuss something on consent? These items are all packaged to be approved in one motion. Do you have an item? Which one?
With the Chair's permission and the rest of the Board, we'd like to withdraw Item 29D. It's a travel request from Page 8 of your agenda from the Board's consideration today.
I'm sorry, clarification, that was 29B Bravo?
No, 29D Dog.
B Delta, okay. And you are asking that it be removed for discussion or removed?
Just removed entirely.
Okay, are there any other requests for removal? Jack?
Don't have a request for removal, but just wanted to make a comment after the Consent Agenda.
Jim?
Yeah, I didn't want to pull it off the agenda, but we have an issue on here about the rental rates at Dewitt Center. In my district, I get a lot of calls about that, and I just want to thank staff for the hard work they've done to make adjustments in the rent structure at Dewitt Center and work with some of those tenants that are having difficulty. So your efforts are greatly appreciated. So I just want to thank you in public comment. Thanks.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like us to pull something for specific discussion? Seeing none, then?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of consent absent Item 29D Delta.
I'll second. It's been moved in second. Roll call, Anne?
You, Larry?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes, thank you. It's still not 9:30, so we...
I believe Mr. Duran wanted to...
I'm sorry, Jack.
Mr. Rucucci, would you please stand? I just wanted to introduce the new Planning Commissioner for District One. I'm very proud to have Richard Rucucci, a member of many different endeavors in the city of Roseville, serve as District One Planning Commissioner. As you all know, being part of Boards and Commissions in any capacity, whether it's school board, city council, county, takes a lot of time, talent, and effort, and thought. And I know that Richard is going to do an outstanding job for the district. Not only does Richard bring a lot of experience to the position, but as many of you may not know, Richard most recently fought one of the toughest battles of his life, and he survived. And I know that at the end of the day, when push comes to shove, Richard's going to take that extra lap. Thank you, and I'm honored to have you.
Better behave yourself, or we'll be yelling. So our first department item, Administrative Services. Jim? There is Jim. Blanket purchase order, passenger car, truck, and heavy equipment.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'm Jim Bogan, the Purchasing Manager, and Item 6A is requesting your Board's approval to renew blanket purchase orders awarded from a competitively bid public agency cooperative agreement with Auburn Tire Service and Schultz Tire Factory here in Auburn. The original bid was by the state of Utah on behalf of the Western States Contract Alliance, which includes the state of California. And we call these piggyback purchases because we're taking advantage of the huge purchasing power of a number of states in the western U.S. to get better prices than we might get as a small county in the state of California. In this case, contract discounts for Bridgestone, Goodyear, and Michelin products range from 20% to 50%. Upon your Board's approval, BPOs, blanket purchase orders, to be effective for one year in the amount of $127,500, will be awarded to each vendor for a maximum aggregate amount of $255,000. Staff also requests that you allow your purchasing manager to move money between these BPOs as necessary so that we can pick the best service and price at a particular time and requirement. And staff would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Seeing none, is any one from the public wish to comment on this? With that, pleasure of the Board.
Move approval of blanket purchase order.
Second.
Moved in second to approve staff recommendation with purchase order. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item is the approval of minutes for December 14th, which is normally a consent item, but because of new membership, it's on department items.
Chairman, I move approval of the minutes of the December 14, 2010 meeting.
Moving in second to approve the minutes of the December 14, 2010 meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Yes.
Thanks. The minutes are approved. The next department item is Emergency Services. Adopt a resolution approving the California Department Forestry and Fire Protection Cooperative Morning, Rory. Brad?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the record, my name is Rory Cunha. I'm the Program Manager for the Office of Emergency Services, and I'm pleased to be joined this morning by Fire Chief Brad Harris, Chief of the Nevada Yuba Placer Unit, and the overseer of this contract. The item in front of you asks that you adopt a resolution approving the CalFire contract for this current fiscal year in the amount of $8,608,686. This does represent approximately 2.5% increase year over year from last fiscal year to the current year, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in my presentation. Additionally, this item asks that you authorize the Chairman to sign four copies of the agreement, and lastly, that you authorize an extended period payment into next fiscal year in accordance with Exhibit C, Item 3B of the contract, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as well. The contract funds year-round all hazard fire and emergency services over approximately 475 square miles or nearly 1/3 of the total county land area. It also covers, in that area, covers a population of about 45,000, and the service is provided by both full-time as well as volunteer firefighters. The contract pays for the equivalent of 62 paid firefighter staff operating from eight fully-staffed stations that operate 24 hours per day, and those stations are located in Alta, Colfax, Bowman, North Auburn, Ofer, Lincoln, the Sunset Industrial Area, and Dry In addition, CalFire- In addition, CalFire assists the county in overseeing our volunteer firefighter programs, which includes approximately 100 residential as well as community volunteers that are operating from community volunteer stations at Dutch Flat, Fowler, Page, Thermalands, as well as Sheridan. Lastly, the contract funds oversight, command oversight through battalion chiefs, through battalion chiefs that are covered in the contract. Plus, it also adds a mechanic to help the county in maintaining over 50 vehicles, fire engines, as well as support vehicles and trailers that are part of the Placer County Fire System. There is some limited administrative staff that's also funded in the contract. The contract amount of $8,686 represents approximately $125,000 decrease over what we had anticipated in our final budget. That decrease is primarily due to negotiated changes in the benefit rates for CalFire employees. Year-over-year, however, as I mentioned, the contract does include approximately 2% increase. That year-over-year increase is due to two factors primarily. First, this is the first full year that we are fully funding the expansion in services at the casino station. In last year, we funded 10 out of 12 months because of the timing of when that expansion was there. This is the first full year of that and that is fully funded by the United Auburn Indian Community. Lastly, this contract also has an agreed-on mitigation measure whereby CalFire is doing fire mitigation work below the Forest Hill Bridge as part of the Forest Hill Bridge retrofit. That mitigation measure significantly reduces the potential of a fire start below that bridge during the retrofit period. So those are two elements that we've added to the contract this year that ultimately have caused the increase that we're discussing here. Last thing I'll discuss very briefly and then take any questions that you might have is the extended period payments. By authorizing the extended period payments, your Board is authorizing Placer County to continue to pay bills to CalFire after that period where this contract would have expired. The contract expires at the end of June. The extended period payment, as laid out in Exhibit C, Section 3P, 3B, allows for payments beyond that period. The only comment that I'll make to that is CalFire is asking that we actually accommodate an early contract period this year, so we may very well bring a new contract to your Board in the late May-June timeframe so that we have a fully executed contract prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. An absolute first, an absolute first. Subject, any questions that you might have? Any tough ones, we'll give to Chief Harris and I'll take the easy ones.
I don't see any questions. Jim?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to let the public know that the general fund contribution to this contract is $550,000, which is 6.4 percent of the total. So it's not all coming out of our general fund.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this issue? I'll just comment that over the long time that I've been on the Board, Jim, Placer County Fire has grown and emerged in such a positive direction, so Brad, I just want to thank you for that and the relationship that we have. Most people don't understand, in my supervisory district, except for the cities of Rockland, Lincoln, and Roseville, all of the rural fire protection is Placer County Fire, which essentially partners with CalFire's responsibility to do wildlands fire protection, but amplified by us backfilling so that we have year-round, full-service fire protection. And the growth, particularly in the Sunset Industrial Area with the new enhancements that have come about largely as a result of our relationship with the United Auburn Indian Community, is just tremendous. So appreciate that relationship, Brad, and the work that you do and look forward to it continuing.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if I may, it's been a very good relationship that we fostered over the time that I've been here. I've seen a number of improvements that have been provided to public safety in the area of fire protection and, again, it's just the foresight of this Board that allows us to do that. In the Lincoln area, we've managed to, by relocating a fire station that was antiquated into a better facility, we've managed to improve the response times to the entire community and provide a better level of service for that. As the casino expanded, it's with the Board's assistance and the United Auburn Indian Community, we were able to provide enhanced services in there that not only provide the service to the casino, but to the entire community. And it's by the hard work and the foresight of this Board that we've been able to accomplish that.
Our brand-new ladder truck was at the Galleria Fire.
Yes, we were actually, for the Galleria Fire, Placer County Fire, staffed with CalFire employees, was able to provide two ladder trucks and a couple of fire engines. So we are a very active member of the fire service community, a community that we're very much proud of, and the inner relationships that we have amongst the fire community makes for a cost-efficient and very productive fire service for the entire county.
So thank you, Brad and Rory, for all of that. Pleasure of the Board?
I have...
Oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer, your light.
Yeah. Brad and Rory both, I really want to say thank you for this. I've had a number of people in the Forest Hill and Bowman areas express concern about what happens when a bridge worker throws a cigarette off the bridge. This addition to the contract, doing the controlled burn there in the Forest Hill Bridge Project area, will go a long way to addressing those people's concerns. And so I think it's really important to call out that this is part of this additional cost and it will quite likely save us a lot of potential costs in the future. We all know if we do the work ahead of time, it's a lot cheaper than coming in and trying to clean up after ourselves afterwards. So thank you both very much.
Yes, ma'am. Pleasure of the Board?
Move approval?
Moved in second to approve the resolution regarding the contract for that coming here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Now we can go to our 9:30 timed item, which is a presentation, Placer County 4H All-Stars. And I saw June, there she is. Hi, June.
We always look forward to the opportunity to come before the Board of Supervisors and express our appreciation for your continued support of the youth of our community and of our 4H program. And today, we have three of our All-Stars present that would like to address you, and we also have our new All-Star Advisor, and I'd like her to stand, please. That is Laura Lopez. We'd like to have our All-Stars come forward, please, and share with you their benefits that they have received through the 4H program. This is Justin Legg.
Well, thank you, guys, for letting us be here today. My name is Justin Legg. I'm a 16-year-old junior who just happens to be a Placer County 4H All-Star. And I want to talk to you guys today about what I believe is one of the greatest youth development programs in our state, and that's 4H. I can remember back in third grade, when you asked me to do a presentation, just like any other third grader, I would have run for the hills. And obviously, I'm here standing in front of you today, and at least I'm not running. And when I started 4H, I was nervous and unsure about my life and the future. And 4H sparked an interest in me through projects like scrapbooking and rocketry. I'm no scrapbooker and I'm no rocket scientist, but I gleaned something from both. And they sparked an interest in me in graphic arts and technology, which allowed me to go and research and learn more about things in that area. Now I'm able to lead a video project within 4H that's county-wide, where kids can come and learn about videography and have their interests sparked. 4H is a key essential, at least I believe, for kids. So I want to thank you guys for your continual support of the Placer County 4H program. And if there's any questions, I'm willing to answer them now.
Questions? I don't see any. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, guys.
Justin not only functions on a county level, he also functions on a state level. He is part of the State Computer Core for the 4H program, so anytime that we have state events, that computer core are the ones that make it all happen. And so we're really proud of the, not only do our youths start here in the county, but they go worldwide. And next, we'd like Jessica Legg-Cusick to come, please.
Hi, I'm Jessica Legg and I, I'm 14, and this is my seventh year in 4H. And 4H is just an amazing program, but one of the different things that a lot of people think 4H is about is the animal portion of 4H. But I am definitely no animal person. I've tried chickens and it didn't work. I tried rabbits and it didn't work. So I decided not to do the animals, but they offer a lot of different types of projects that you can do. And one of the ones that I fell in love with is presentations. And we have different levels of presentations that you can participate in. And one of the projects in our club that I'm team leader for is the Presentations Project. And I had the privilege last year of being the junior leader for it. And there was this one girl that came in and she was so nervous, she didn't even want to get up and speak. And with some encouragement and teaching, she made it all the way to the state level. And it was cool to be there with her and I made my presentation and I got the top award that you can there. And I think that presentations is one of those things that will help you, no matter where you go in life, because you're going to need to present to other people. And so I'm just really thankful for your continual support in helping kids find their dream through the 4H program. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't see any questions.
Okay, thank you.
And next, we'd like Isaac Humber to please come forward.
Well, good morning, Members of the Board. My name is Isaac Humber. I am 16 years old and this is my second year as an All-Star. I'm a member of the Gold Country 4H Club. And I can't even begin to tell you guys how much 4H has done and had a positive impact on my life. I think that from the outside looking in, a lot of people just sort of view 4H as another thing to do, along with soccer and baseball and all those other activities that we have in our lives. And I think that 4H is definitely a lot more than that. On the surface, it may seem kind of just borderline, but once you get into it, once you go below the surface, it is amazing the amount of opportunities that you can dig up to further your development. And one thing I'd like to speak specifically about this morning is the area of leadership. 4H is known for turning out good leaders. And I remember when I was, just like Justin, I was really nervous, and this was when I was like seven years old, and I think my mother volunteered me. She's like, "Yeah, you're going to speak about the poultry project." And you know, I'm like this high and I'm just, "No way." And she's like, "Oh, yes, way, you are doing that." And so I got up there and I was really nervous and it was just like the most horrible thing that I had ever done. But it definitely got easier and even though I was still uncomfortable as the years went by, I became more confident of my abilities to speak in front of others, to have responsibility. I started running for officers and now I'm the President of my 4H Club and I'm here representing Placer County as an All-Star. So I think that 4H is a huge opportunity for anyone who has goals to become a leader in their county, and I think that we should all, you know, do our best, do hard things. And I will use the leadership skills that I have learned in 4H to make a positive impact on others. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Isaac.
This is three of our nine current All-Stars who are our county ambassadors in the 4H program. And every countywide event that we put on, they are there helping to organize and plan and make it all happen. And we're so proud of them and we could never do it without them. It's just great to have the input and the support of the youth in our youth-adult partnership. In the 4H program, we have youth that are five years old or kindergarten through until they're 19 years old. And many of our foragers have gone on and worked in FFA as well as 4H at the same time. We just think of it as a ladder and we get them started and they continue on through. And it's a great partnership that we have with our youth. And 4H is more than just cows and cooking, and we work with our youth in science, engineering, and technology to have them be ready to be into the workforce, into the workforce as they become of age and have the tools that they need to accomplish this. The cows and cooking are just tools to help teach the youth leadership and responsibility and the many attributes that they'll need as they go up and become leaders in our community. And we would like to present each of you with an honorary volunteer leadership card and pin. Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Jim. I'm sorry. Yes, Jim?
June, I just want to thank you again for your tireless dedication to these young people. Every year you come forward and these young people are so eloquent and poised and they've really done a great job. And it's because of your leadership over the years and I can't thank you enough for the job that you do. So thank you.
June, I would echo that and congratulations to the All-Stars and thanks for coming. We look forward to you every year coming here. My 4H Club Mount Pleasant survived me a lot of years ago and although I didn't turn out too well, I have better hopes for the rest of you. And we definitely need your enthusiasm and leadership, so thank you. We'll look forward to seeing you next year.
Our next item is Item 9, Health and Human Services, Request to Take Civil Actions Regarding Programs and Budgetary Issues. So, Richard?
Good morning, Chairman Weigant, Members of the Board. Richard Connect, the Children's System of Care Director. This morning, the Department seeks your consideration and approval toward two contracts which have recently been rebid. For many years, the Children's System of Care has pioneered strategies to better engage service recipients and reduce dependency on county systems in both child welfare and probation. Among those strategies, the use of parents with lived experience as consumers of services has proven very effective. In recent years, we've seen less reentry to care, fewer grievance filings, and shorter durations of care as a result of good family and youth partnership. These two contracts together will provide Placer families and youth with this valuable and cost-effective service. Items A through D then, free consideration, an 18-month contract with... An 18-month contract with Mental Health Advocates of North America in the amount of $965,970 for delivery of family and adult partnership and advocacy. Item B, a similar contract, 18 months in duration with whole-person learning in the amount of $238,609 for youth engagement and advocacy. Item C is the usual department authority for amendments. And Item D is a brief extension of the existing contract with the outgoing provider in order to assure a seamless transition for the staff and the residents currently benefiting from these services. The amount of that request is $45,337,000. There are no county general funds in any of these contracts, and we would recommend your approval.
Any question by the members of the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Seen none?
No approval. Second.
Moved in second to approve the Items A through D, Health and Human Services. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Richard. Our next item is Personnel, and Nancy's gonna, isn't it? No, Anne, I can see. Oh, there she is. She's back there somewhere, but.
She's present.
Present. Resolution Regarding Change to CalPERS Ordinance. Anne.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. And I probably won't be as eloquent as our young 4H leaders. They did a marvelous job for their age. Today, before you, you have three recommendations from our office and County Executive's Office to move forward with your board direction of September 7th and November 2nd in our labor contracts and implementations of the agreements that we had put forward. And it's the two-tier, to create a second tier for our employees, for new hires. And part of this is the adoption of a resolution of intention for CalPERS, saying that, yes, we are moving forward to adopt this and to create two new formulas for new hires coming in. The first is for miscellaneous members, 2% at 55, local modified. And then, for our safety members, it would be 3% at 55, modified. It's also the introduction of an ordinance that can happen at the same time as the resolution of intention for both those same formulas. And also, to approve two CalPERS resolutions for new hires' management and confidential safety management to pay the full amount of their PERS benefit, the employee contribution. By, just in summary, I realize there's a lot there, but basically what we're trying to do is move forward with your board direction to create these two new tiers for all our new hires that come forward after the adoption of this. It's anticipated that at the February 8th meeting, we will do the adoption of the ordinance. You'll have a 30-day run, and then on March 12th would be the effective date for a new hire coming in. After that date would be under the new formula. By way of kind of a representation for you, a new hire under the miscellaneous plan would be looking at if they retired at age 50, it's a benefit reduction of approximately 28%. A new hire under the safety plan, it's a reduction of approximately 20% if they retired at age 50. The long-term benefits come from the change in, obviously, as the members, new employees come forward, then there would be a benefit change and a reduction in the cost in the extrarial side, which is why I have Trice, because she's our number cruncher, and she does this much better than I do. One of the other pieces that is also being amended in this formula is the three-year final compensation. Currently, employees have a one-year final average, so they look back at the employee goes to retire, looks back what their history has been on pay for the previous 12 months. This would now take that out to 36 months. One of the other benefit changes is that the employees under the miscellaneous plan will see a reduction in cost from the full 8% of value to, it goes down to 7%. However, as I mentioned, all new hires under management, confidential, and safety will now be paying that full 7% benefit. So, that's kind of your summary in terms of that, and I laid out a little bit of the timeline, but the effective date that we are looking at is March 12th. It should also be noted that the Plaster County Superior Courts will also fall under this provision, as they are tied to our CalPERS contract, and they have been notified of that change as well and are on board with that. The financial aspect for your board, as I mentioned, is will be more of a long-term benefit, and we're looking at approximate reduction in the overall CalPERS rate of 1.4% on miscellaneous side and 2.9% on the safety side, depending on all the other demographics that go along with the CalPERS extrarials, as well as the immediate savings is going to be with new hires coming onboard that will be paying their employee contribution for the retirement system now. So, anywhere from approximately $4,200 per employee on an annual basis to $5,900. And if you look at it on a straight map, this morning, Trice and I were going, "Well, wait, our math is different." It's eight, if you take the 8% on an average of a salary, new starting salary of about $50,000, that's where the savings comes in, because their rate now will go down to 7% of what the employer will be paying. But if we didn't do the formula change, we would still be paying the higher amount. So, with that.
Trice Leonard with the County Executive Office. This is actually a closure of an item that has been going on for many, many months that your board has been intricately involved in. I would like to acknowledge the Plaster County Deputy Sheriff's Association, who stepped up through their negotiations and agreed to the new platform change for new hires, as well as the management and confidential staff, who also agreed to this change for the new platform. Unfortunately, because it is a process, it will only affect new hires after the date of March 12th, but it is a start. So, thank you. Questions?
Questions? Comments? Seen none. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this? With that, I'll bring it back to the board for action, and we should take each one of these individually. Items A, 1, 2, and 3.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the Resolution of Intention for the California Public Employees' Retirement System to amend the CalPERS contract to provide 2% at 55, local modified, excuse me, modified local miscellaneous, and 3% at 55, modified local safety formula for new hires.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the thus-mentioned Resolution of Intention. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I'd further move that we approve an ordinance for the California Public Employees' Retirement System to amend CalPERS contract to provide 2% at 55, local modified miscellaneous, and 3% at 55, local modified safety formula for new hires per government code listed.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the just-stated ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anne.
Mr. Chairman, I finally move that we approve two CalPERS resolutions to identify that employees hired on or after March 12, 2011, including elected officials, management classified and unclassified, safety management, confidential employees will pay the full employee retirement contribution.
Moved in second to approve the two resolutions just-stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Next item is Number 11, Probation Administrative Services Procurement. Anne, I guess, Jim, are you going to lead on this?
Good morning, Chairman Wiegand, honorable members of the board, and thank you for this opportunity to do this brief presentation this morning. And the matter before the board is sort of two steps. It's a brief presentation on electronic monitoring programs, followed by a request for approval for a lease contract for electronic monitoring equipment. Plaster County Probation Department operates a vast array of alternative sentencing options. In juvenile, we have pre-trial EMP, post-sentence EMP, home supervision and work project. In adult, we have pre-trial EMP, post-sentence EMP, pre-trial supervised OR, drug court, work release, and post-sentence electronic monitoring. This program, this morning's presentation and funding request is specific to the electronic monitoring programs primarily. In fiscal year 0910, looking at juveniles, the utilization of EMP resulted in the savings of over 17,850 bed days at our juvenile hall. That's about 49 beds per day. The juvenile hall capacity is only 78 beds. By managing EMP efficiently, we did not have to open a fourth unit at our juvenile hall. That resulted in an annual saving of $1.7 million and a little over $8 million over the past five years that we've been able to not open that unit. And also, our overtime has been reduced since 2007. We've been able to reduce our overtime by 46%. And looking at adults, in fiscal year 0910, EMP utilization resulted in approximately 51,000 bed days saved. That's 152 beds per day that are not required as custody beds. And looking at the years just prior to 2009, the jail's capacity is 646 beds. And from 2006 to 2008, the jail housed approximately 590, up to 606 inmates daily. And in 2008 alone, over 95 years of sentenced time was not served due to the mandatory releases under the federal court order. Folks refused to apply for alternative sentencing. Instead, they decided to sit around and wait for their early kick opportunity. This caused our EMP programs to start to decline, and they did decline dramatically. In late 2008, we only had, for example, 18 people participating on our electronic monitoring programs. In September of 2008, utilizing state emergency legislation, which was Senate Bill 959, we were able to implement an involuntary electronic monitoring service program. We put probation officers into the jail, working side by side with sheriff deputies and correctional officers, and we screened and interviewed and assisted inmates into going into some of these programs. In a matter of months, we were able to take the jail population down from the high 580s, 601, I believe that as of September 15, 2008, it was actually 601. We were able to take it down into the 550s. Soon thereafter, with jail beds being available at the jail, more and more folks realized that they then had to start applying for alternative sentencing programs. And we sort of primed the pump. We now have a situation where people realize, "I need to apply in order to get out of jail and get back to work and go about my life." So, we've sort of pretty much here in Plaster County been able to turn that 2006 to 2008 crisis around quite dramatically. We've maintained the population from November 2008 through December 2009. It's been anywhere from about 535 to 565. In December of 2009, we layered in another alternative sentencing program, and that is pre-trial. It's pre-trial EMP and pre-trial supervised OR. And with those programs, I have a handout that kind of tracks the monthly average for all of 2010, and I'd like to hand that to the board right now. This handout shows that the alternative sentencing, it shows alternative sentencing program populations, all of them, not just EMP. It shows juvenile hall populations, and it shows the jail populations as well for 2010 by month. As you can see from the handout, the first quarter 2010 jail population averaged approximately 558. And those numbers at the jail vary dramatically throughout the day. If you take it at 6:00 AM, noon, 5:00 PM, it'll vary by as much as 10, 15, 20, 30 per day, based on bookings and court activities. The fourth quarter of 2010 shows an average of about 511. And today's population at the jail is 497. With this system turnaround, we now have approximately 170 offenders per month being diverted onto our electronic monitoring programs, and the programs are continuing to grow. Only eligible, qualified applicants can be on these programs. Our program revenue is also on the rise. Now that we no longer have to offer involuntary, folks have to apply. When they have to, when they apply, they also have to pay. So, our program revenues are on the increase. The revenue numbers that you see on that form, which is right below the jail line, are revenues from about one and a half to two years ago. Because of the AB 3000 distribution, we're just realizing those revenues now from 18 to 24 months ago. We are looking at a year and a half to two years from now, our program revenues should be fairly close with offsetting the total cost of our lease equipment that is before you this morning. EMP ensures that sentences are served, it enhances public safety, and it holds offenders accountable. The GPS technology, in conjunction with close supervision, tracks offender activities 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They must be in certain places at a given time, and there are certain areas that they are not ever allowed to go into. Offenders are subject to search and seizure, alcohol and drug testing, they must pay their fines, fees, and victim restitution, and they must pay program fees. In addition to that, they must abide by all the program rules and regulations, as well as any terms and conditions ordered by the court. They are only allowed to leave their homes for work, school, counseling, medical appointments, and church. The overall program success rate is anywhere from 75 to 85%. Our adults who are on post-sentence EMP tend to do a little better. The juveniles, every now and then, not so much. And the folks who are on our pre-trial programs, it's their first introduction into the rules and regulations of our programs, and we've had early on upwards of 40 to 45% of them, we've program failed and taken them back to the jail. That's somewhat to be expected, because this is their early introduction to the criminal justice system and accountability and rules and regulations. Thereafter, when they come out, if they're on our other programs, they appear that they've learned their lesson, if you will. When someone violates our program rules nowadays, there is a custody bed available with their name on it, and that's the good news for Plaster County. And I thank you very much for the time to present this information to you.
Thanks. Kirk.
The revenue that we're looking at from the electronic monitoring doesn't seem to, it seems to ebb and flow a bit more than the actual number of folks on the electronic monitoring program. For instance, we see the revenue having dropped off rather substantially in September, just half of what it was in October, and yet the September and October numbers relatively consistent in electronic monitoring. What's the reason for that kind of a dramatic fluctuation in the revenue side of it?
The revenue is difficult to control, because everyone is entitled by law to be on these various alternative sentencing programs, and we cannot deny their participation on the programs if there's no ability to pay. So, it does seem to come in spurts.
Okay, that answers that. And then, it looks like, as you look at the various levels of detainment or review that folks are subject to, as we see the jail bed population kind of dropping steadily throughout the year, the only thing that seems to be going up appreciably throughout the year really is the supervised owner recognizance. How, and how well does that seem to be working, the supervised OR?
That actually is working quite well. That number is growing. The courts require us to give them pretty consistent feedback, as does the district attorney's office. So, I don't know the overall exact success rate of that program, but it has been higher than pre-trial EMP.
Right, right. That's what I'm looking at. Okay, thank you.
Yes. Jennifer.
Stephen, thank you for the presentation. I'm interested in what EMP out-of-county means.
We have two situations with EMP out-of-county. One is that some other counties that could be fairly far away, we have reciprocal agreements with them whereby they put our offenders that commit the crimes here in Plaster County that live in their county, they will put them on EMP in their county under a reciprocal agreement. We would do the same for them. The other issue is that we have had to stretch and go into Nevada County, Sutter, Sacramento, Yolo, El Dorado, in order to put some of these nearby folks on EMP. They live out-of-county, but we do the supervision and everything, but we just keep track of those numbers by designating them out-of-county EMP, because it is time-consuming to have these cases all over the map.
Okay. And then, you had mentioned that your success rate throughout the scope of these programs was between 75 and 85%. That means those people don't go back to jail. That's what you mean by success rate?
That amount does not go back to jail, correct.
Okay. And I don't know if you're the right person to ask this question of, but people who come people who complete their sentences, complete their terms in jail, what is their success rate? Do we know those figures roughly?
Wow.
Comparable, higher, lower?
You mean, the success rates that I'm referring to here, the 75 to 85% overall success rate, that is specific only to the success rate of the custody time completion?
I see, completing the monitoring program.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you think that there are additional opportunities within the county to increase these programs, to put more people onto them, so that we don't keep bumping up against those federal caps?
I do. I think Placer County still continues to experience fairly high incidence of substance abusers, that's alcohol and drug. And in '06, I believe, we had five or six DUI-related traffic deaths, and that spurred us to get involved in numerous DUI reviews and symposiums, and we put together a high-risk DUI caseload. The problem has not gone away, so I am thinking that there's that substance abuse crowd that we need to take a look at, and I'd like to partner with HHS and actually get a practitioner back in the jail at some point to doing assessments and treatment needs and residential needs or outpatient needs. And if someone's going to be transitioned into residential treatment or outpatient treatment, we could monitor them via GPS. Part of today's request for this $440,000, I believe 325,000 of that is for traditional lease equipment, and 115,000 is for some rather new alcohol-related testing that we can test people in their homes through a video conference that we can see them actually take the alcohol test, and then we will get the immediate alcohol breath results transmitted to us electronically. So that is part of this morning's request, and I appreciate your question.
Thank you.
Chad, did you?
Yes, Steve. Thank you again for your presentation, and also, it looks like you've done quite a, quite a pretty good job here with managing this resource and creating efficiencies. You did mention with regards to the failure rate of between 25% to 30% for folks that fail in the program. Is that, could you quantify the reoffense and just breaking the rules and the criteria for the program?
Yes, thank you. The majority of the program rule violations contributing to that percentage that don't complete the program successfully, the majority, and I'd say easily over 90% in all instances, is because of program rule violations, not new offenses. Many of those people go back because of a program rule violation, they go back into custody, they might do three, four, five, 10 days, and the judge may re-release them back onto our program again, thinking that now they've learned their lesson.
Thank you.
Yeah, just briefly, I do want to relate to the board meeting with the presiding judge and other members of the bench yesterday. They're very cognizant of the savings here, and I understand that the probation violations come in a higher percentage in the past, but are definitely in keeping with the type of issues. They cited some statistics with Becky Rigan and I yesterday, that 20 days of time spent in a jail for a rule violation is time well spent when that kind of action happens because it sends a strong message back to those folks who are in these kind of programs not to violate even the rules, and it protects the public well. So it's with the cooperation of the bench achieving these kind of successes, our sheriff's departments, district attorney, probation, it is definitely a criminal justice effort that really makes this kind of program successful.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this issue? Seen none. Steve, I want to congratulate you again for your statewide recognition in this effort, largely because I know it bothers you when I do that, so I want to... But then I wanted to thank you for all of the work you've done in this regard. I mean, public safety in Placer County is an example that we can point to, and the cost savings that come from this obviously haven't compromised that, but likely enhanced it. So it's, you know, a terrific management scheme, and we greatly appreciate your effort and the innovative approach that you've taken. Congratulations again, and thank you again.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, now Jim, are you going to present the cost part of this?
I will. Jim Bogans, still purchasing manager. I'll address the nuts and bolts of how we'll contract. Once again, we'd like to get your approval to piggyback off of a Western States Contract Alliance contract, actually two of them. The first with Protech Monitoring Incorporated. That contract will be $325,000, and that covers the monitoring that Steve talked about. And then the second contract that we'll piggyback is with G4S Justice Services. That contract will be for $115,000, and that's for the alcohol monitoring. So with your approval, we'll do both of those blanket purchase orders for a one-year period. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Questions? Seen none from the public. Pleasure of the board.
Moved and... Seconded.
Seconded to basically buy all the goodies that make the innovative system work. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Next item, Public Works Auburn-Folsom Road Widening Middle Phase Project. I don't think anyone really cares about this project. Sorry, Kirk, just had to do that.
Good morning, Chairman. Board supervisors, Peter Kratz with Public Works here on department item number 12 for Public Works. Contract change order request for the middle phase project of the Auburn-Folsom Road, construction contract number 1073. Today, we're asking your board to adopt a resolution increasing the authority for the director of Public Works to authorize and execute construction contract change orders with Western Engineering Contractors by an additional $250,000 for a total not to exceed contract contingency amount equal to $679,700 or 15.8% of the original approved contract bid amount. The middle phase project was awarded back in fall 2009 to Western Engineering Contractors for widening Auburn-Folsom Road from two to four lanes at a location 1,500 feet north of Oak Hill Drive to 1,500 feet south of Eureka Road, a roadway distance of about one mile. Construction is currently proceeding with completion scheduled for this summer. During the course of construction thus far, contract change orders have roughly totaled our director's original authority given by your board, or $429,700, equivalent to 10% of the original contract amount. There have been some unforeseen issues with the project that result for asking for an increase in the original 10% construction contingency amount. They center around three main areas, including, number one, traffic control measures beyond the original bid amount; number two, drainage improvements beyond or in excess of what was originally designed; and number three, working with private property owners that front the roadway to mitigate road construction impacts and field-fit new connections between private driveways and the newly widened roadway. In retrospect, some of these cost increases might have been incorporated into the original project design, resulting in a higher original bid amount, and therefore, the increase in the contract change orders is not necessarily considered excessive. Your approval of the requested action today would ratify contract change orders 1 through 46 for approximately $429,000, and increase the director's authorization by $250,000 for future contract change orders. The resolution before you increases the total contract amount to just under $5 million. This project was highly competitive with the original bid being awarded at 63% of the original engineer's estimate of $7.9 million. Therefore, the final construction amount is still expected to be significantly less than what we originally estimated. As indicated in the board memo before you, the project is fully funded by a variety of sources that will still be sufficient with the request to expend additional construction dollars to complete this project. Funding sources include the San Juan Water District, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, traffic mitigation fees from the Granite Bay Trust Fund, and the South Placer Regional Transportation Authority, otherwise known as SPARDA. In closing, I respectfully request approval of this item, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thanks.
Kirk.
Yeah, I appreciate you pointing out the point that I want to emphasize, that even though we are looking at a change order increasing the cost, that the original engineer's estimate that we anticipated for this middle phase was about eight million bucks. And so even with this change order, we're still substantially less than what we thought it was going to be. As for the north phase, can you just give us a brief update as to the status of that project, if you have it off the top of your head?
A little bit, and I might have, Ken helped me out a little bit, our director, but we are in the midst of design. I think the biggest critical path item for that is the right-of-way acquisition that we still need. And I don't know our current status of where we are with the various owners of, that we need to negotiate the right-of-way from. The design continues. We'll get it as close to being shelf or bid-ready as we can while we work out those issues with the right-of-way acquisition. And Ken, I don't know if you want to add any more on the right-of-way status that I'm not aware of right now.
Ken Grimm with Department of Public Works. I think our intent is, we've been doing these phases, I think there's been four, or planned to be four phases for the total construction of the project. We are in the third phase right now. There has been the south phase, the middle phase, and then immediately prior to that was a new signal that was constructed on Fuller Drive. I think our intent is, when this project is over next year, we hope for 2012 to be the beginning of construction of the north phase. To do that, there are still some right-of-way issues, that's probably the biggest issues. And then we will also have to come up with a financing package. We do have money planned for the project through the South Placer Regional Transportation Authority, over $7 million being contributed, not just from money being collected within the unincorporated county, but also from the cities as well. But we will, but that money is not available yet. It will come as development occurs throughout the county. But we do believe we can come up with a finance mechanism, and we also have to complete the right-of-way acquisition negotiations. But we're hoping 2012 will be the kickoff for the final phase of the project.
Right-of-way on that particular phase has been almost the key stumbling block all along. And if I recall correctly, it's down to just a couple of property owners that we're dealing with?
I believe we have four properties, two property owners.
Right. And I'm assuming that you have been in touch with county council on developing a case for eminent domain. Should we need to go that way?
If we need to go there, absolutely, yes.
I would like that conversation to be ongoing so that this doesn't get held up any longer while we have to go develop that in the event that these folks continue to be recalcitrant on this.
Fair enough.
Yes, thank you, Peter, for the presentation. I want to make sure I understand, it sounded to me like the reason for this request was kind of twofold. One, there were some things that probably in retrospect should have been included in the original bid, but then there were also a number of unforeseen issues, which, as we all know, do come up. I'm not so concerned about the unforeseen issues because we do know those arise. I would like to get a little bit of reassurance that certainly in the future, we're going to take this experience, roll those into future RFPs to make sure that we do cover those pieces that should be included.
Agreed. And I'll just comment to say that this section of roadway, pretty significant cuts to make this widening project happen, like on the order of 15 feet below Folsom Reservoir. A big part of the contingency expenditures is designing and installing now an underdrain system to make sure the road stays dry. And about 3,000 feet or more of piping that needs to be installed that was not part of the original design, I agree with you wholeheartedly. Lots of times, a project like this, somewhat accelerated through the process to get to where we are today, we pay a little bit of premium by not catching that in the original design. We might pay a little bit more in exchange for moving things along faster to make things happen at a more accelerated rate. But I wholeheartedly agree, the idea of making sure those kinds of things are incorporated in future projects. We will look at that closely.
Excellent, because I'm really, I'm not finger-pointing or blaming anybody, I'm just saying we all want to try to learn from our...
You bet.
...our mistakes and missteps. So thank you.
Yep.
Anyone from the public wish to address this? With that, bring it back to the board for consideration.
Mr. Chairman, move approval for the...
Moved and seconded to approve staff recommendation with the middle portion or whatever it is of Auburn-Folsom Road widening. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Yep.
Our next item, 13, is a budget revision, Sheriff's Department, $591,000. And Janice, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Wygant, members of the board. For the record, Janice Gage, Administrative Services Manager with the Sheriff's Office. We're here today to request your board's approval of a budget revision to appropriate funding from the Department of Homeland Security Grant Program for the purchase of equipment, maintenance, and training. The total amount of the budget revision is $591,345, of which $31,700 are fixed asset equipment, two items that qualify as fixed assets. We request that your board also approve those items be added to the master fixed asset list as required, and we ask that you authorize the purchasing manager to execute any related documents. The equipment listed will be purchased with these grant funds, and any maintenance costs that are not covered by warranty will be covered within our departmental budgets, and there is no impact to the general fund. So with that, we request your board's approval, and we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Any comments, questions from the public? Seen none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Moved and...
Moved and seconded to approve the just discussed budget revision requires a roll call vote. Ann?
Holmes?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Uller?
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Close session. We have completed our department items. Our next time item is at 11:00, so we are going to adjourn to closed session. Tony?
The board will take up the item on page four, item 14. There's one case, an appellate case pending in the Court of Appeals. The board will be back after that for its 11:00 item, and we'll have a report out at that time. out at that time.
Shouldn't this change?
There we go, yes. The Board is reconvening after closed session and Tony LaBeouf will report out for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board has concluded its closed session discussion for today. It took up the one appeals court litigation matter. The Board had a conversation with counsel and gave direction to counsel. That closes this report.
Thanks, Tony. We will now go to our 11 o'clock timed item, County Exec, our Legislative Platform, and Allison Carlos is going to present that.
Good morning. Allison Carlos with the County Executive Office, and I am presenting Item 4, which is your Legislative Platform, which contains two actions for your consideration. The first action would be that you would adopt the 2011 Legislative Platform and that you would direct staff to engage in action items and that we would implement and coordinate the program for the county. The second action which we'd be considering is for your designation and authorization for Board members and the County Executive Office if you travel to Washington, D.C. in February in order to discuss our federal priorities legislatively and policy-wise, funding-wise with congressional members and agency staff. The platform before you is consistent with the approach used in prior years. It establishes the basis for the county's policies and objectives relative to advocacy efforts, and it also incorporates a number of specific proposals primarily through the work with our departments, a lot of them which are here today should you have any questions. Over the next year, staff will continue to defend the county as state and federal agencies are trying to address their substantial budget deficits. We are already seeing interest in the role of local government in some of those solutions with the rollout of the governor's budget yesterday. Staff will be attentive to forecasting and responding to actions that may be adverse to the county and that would increase the local service delivery responsibility to the local agencies without substantial resourcing that's sustainable. We would also work with our advocates to seek increased dollars for infrastructure projects We support or oppose, or we would potentially sponsor legislation in effect to necessarily to affect necessary policy clarification and rules and regulation modification. Continue to work with our region to demonstrate regional benefit, area benefit, and that we have cooperative partnerships that have broader range of area of benefit. Our advocates identify that this is a key element for securing, to the extent possible in these tight economic times, funding for infrastructure projects and programs. Examples of this would be to include the regional cooperatives for the Placer County Conservation Plan, regional wastewater system, and important roadways such as the Placer Parkway. Also important will be our efforts to seek policy and regulation clarification or relief from requirements that are deemed unduly burdensome to the county and fiscally imprudent or technically unsubstantiated. For example, the building codes that require new sprinklers for all homes, including rural homes, or for the wastewater compliance timelines. So that would be my presentation for that first action. Would you like me to go forward with a second action, or would you like to take action at this time?
Does the Board have any questions or comments? Why don't we go ahead and take action on the first item first, which is to adopt the delineated Legislative Platform as per the staff report? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this issue? Thank you. Seen none?
You have approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Legislative Platform as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the second action, staff is requesting the designation and authorization for travel. In February of each year, your Board typically will authorize two to four board members and the County Executive Officer to travel to Washington, D.C. to meet with congressional members and agencies. Our advocacy firm, Holland and Knight, continues to emphasize the material importance of these face-to-face meetings in order to secure funding. In the past 10 years, the county has been fortunate to secure over $105 million for regional projects, and these trips are believed to have provided benefit and assistance in that process. Most of the priority projects slated for discussion in 2011 have been listed in your staff report, but they do include the interoperable radio system, biomass utilization, regional wastewater facility, Auburn Recreation, a state recreation park area management, and others. Typically, a board member familiar with the policy or program would be designated to take the lead in the meeting, and a calendar and a schedule is prepared around that orientation. So again, staff is requesting your designation of participating board members and authorization for the trip not to exceed a total amount of $6,000 depending upon the number of participants. We do have also today Chris Beal, who is the counsel for the county from Resources Law Group for the Placer County Conservation Plan, and he may have a couple of comments relative to the importance of these trips.
As Allison said, I'm Chris Beal with Resources Law Group, and I wanted to just underscore the importance of meeting with the regulatory agencies that are involved in the Placer County Conservation Plan in Washington, D.C. As many of you know, the county's been working on this plan and program for the past several years, and the county is proposing something that is unprecedented from a regulatory perspective from these agencies. So we will need their support, both in terms of their investment of time and staff resources in helping to develop the plan, but also, and very importantly, will need the support of the regulatory agencies in Washington for some very novel policy proposals that we are presenting to the agencies. We've had good support here at the state level, but many of the things that we're proposing will have to be approved by the regulatory agencies in Washington, D.C. And my experience has been that engaging them early in the process or before the final decision point can be very helpful, and I think it also leaves a great impression on the policymakers of the regulatory agencies if elected officials from the county will be there emphasizing the importance of the program. We'll probably take that kind of effort and focus from the county and with assistance from the policymakers in Washington, D.C. to finalize the plan. So just wanted to underscore the importance of that from my perspective, and if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer that.
Questions of Chris? Don't see any, Chris, thanks.
Mr. Chairman. Building on that, as far as our biomass program, I think it's important for us to go back and talk to officials in the Department of Energy since Senator Feinstein has been able to get almost $3 million from the Department of Energy for our biomass program. So I think it's important for us to go back and explain to those officials that oversee that in the Department of Energy where we're, how we're progressing and what our plans are for the future. I just wanted to make that comment as well.
Any other, Tom?
Yes, I'd maybe for the betterment of the public out there, if there could be some discussion about the five-year reauthorization of the transportation bill and how important that is going to be for this upcoming year, Placer Parkway, et cetera.
Well, we did talk to Holland and Knight about that, and they would expect that the Congress will take that up within the next months presumably. That bill only happens every five years, and it's billions and billions of dollars. The last time it was authorized, the county received over that $70 million for the I-80 Road Widening Project. And so when we're looking at something like Placer Parkway where the county request is going to be $20 million, $25 million or better, we would like to think that we are going to be competitive for that particular funding source. So they would emphasize that also that while funding is tightening on the federal and the state level, that the support that Placer County has received from certain congressional members is still in play when we are bringing forward projects that are very much regional and of benefit in the community. So specifically to the surface transportation authorization bill that Tom Miller mentioned, that would be coming around, and it only does come around every five years.
Any other questions? Anyone else from the public like to address the Board on this or have a question? So you're specifically asking direction from the Board as to funding the trip and/or designating?
Designating, please, and then we would prepare the paperwork accordingly.
Okay, thanks.
Jim.
Jim?
Oh, Jennifer.
Oh, Jennifer.
I know, I look so much like him.
No.
There are a couple of issues that are called out specifically that I'm very concerned about and really want to make sure that we get the framing right when we go back to D.C. As I think you all know, I'm actually going to be out of town for my birthday during this time, so I won't be able to go to D.C. on this trip. But Allison, I just want to say that I'm more than willing to sit down and kind of help frame the discussions ahead of time and maybe hit some really specific points that we should be targeting on this for whoever does bring those issues forward in D.C. So while I can't make it, I would be very happy to be involved in helping set the groundwork for that trip.
Kirk?
Chairman, I would move that the Board designate Supervisors Wiegand and Holmes as our representatives on this trip in order to carry our Legislative Platform forward.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that Supervisor Holmes and myself attend this year. Just as a comment, having been on the Board for 16 years now, clearly, I don't know how long we've been doing this, but I think Allison mentioned that we've received, just in terms of designated funds, that we wouldn't have likely gotten otherwise of over 100 million?
105.
105 million. But more than that, as in any business, ours is relationship-oriented and having the opportunity to meet with folks in Washington from the Army Corps of Engineers, Division Wildlife Services, related to the Conservation Plan, not to mention projects that are near to us, I think serve our taxpayers very well, and there's no question in my mind that it's an investment that's well made. So with that, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. So we're done with the agenda with the exception of committee assignments, which we're going to take up at noon? In Conference Room A?
In Conference Room A. And if the Board would permit me, I just want to extend my personal appreciation to Allison Carlos. As many of your Board members are aware, we had a significant injury to Mary Hurtigan who used to do this job. She's been out since last spring-ish, I'm trying to think, and hopefully she'll be coming back someday back in her old position. But Allison has been doing double time and doing her regular land use stuff plus legislative advocacy, and on a state level as well as federal level, we had a very big, very successful specialty state advocacy program that wrapped up this last fall, and I just want to thank Allison for doing double team in these times of shortage of staff and doing a very well job at the same time.
Thanks, Allison. So we will break until we reconvene in Conference Room A at high noon.